All right, welcome. Today is February 20th, 2025. We are meeting in person and virtually today at the Washington State Liquor and Cannabis Board at 9:31 a.m. Today's meeting is being recorded. If you wish to provide public comment, please raise your hand to be recognized. Once recognized, please state your name. Written comments on today's agenda should have been received by email or on our website by the close of business yesterday. The chat feature has been turned off. If you have any technical difficulties, please email us at askus@wsgc.wa.gov. All right, we have Commissioner Lawson here, Commissioner Ibsen, Commissioner Charles.
Here.
Thank you. Senator Conway? Senator Holy? Representative Klobach? Or Representative Waters? All right, so we will begin with Tab 1, which is the Consent Agenda. It covers the January Commission meeting minutes, new licensees in Class 3 gaming employees, and the house bank card room list. Do we have any comments or questions from the commissioners on that? Any public comments? Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented by staff.
I'll second it. All right, it's been moved and approved, seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All right. Next, we have the election of Vice Chair. Are there any nominations for Vice Chair?
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Lawson for Vice Chair.
Seconded.
All right. And can I just clarify that a little bit, that the term will begin immediately and surf through the election of new officers in 2025? Is that okay too? Okay. So it's been moved and seconded that we're nominating Commissioner Lawson as Vice Chair with their term to begin immediately and surf through the election of new officers. I think that should say in 2026, actually. Or is it?
Yeah.
Okay. In 2026?
Oh, no, no, no.
Or is it this July?
It's up to you, but I believe it would be this year, so then you can stay on track for...
Okay.
Because the chair position is only through...
Okay, okay, yeah, so through 2025. Yes, all right. Are there any other nominations? Hearing no other nominations, we will proceed to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 All right, congratulations, Commissioner Lawson. Now, we have the Executive Director's Report with Executive Director Griffin.
Thank you, commissioners. So just a very brief update. We staff did assist just recently on an investigation that was in Thurston County with other local law enforcement agencies. Over 500 roosters were seized, and so just happy to be a part of that. And then also staff following that have been working, have been doing some interviews with Cairo and the News Tribune, just bringing awareness to animal fighting, animal cruelty, along with the, I think it's the King County Task Force on Animal Fighting. So have a good relationship with them and just happy to be of assistance to those local agencies. So and just recognizing the good work that staff does. That is all I have to report to you. Oh, I do, we do have a new ex officio representative... Oh, I see, there's a typo in my report. We do have a new representative representing the commission, Kevin Waters, replacing Representative Eric Robertson, so happy to have him on board. That's all I have for you today. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So next up is the Rocky Mountain Elk Foundation with Jim Melville, Special Agent, and Alex Byer from the Rocky Mountain Elk Foundation. Are you available?
Yes. I'm here.
Go ahead and get started.
Good morning, Chair Levy and Ex officios. My name is Jim Melville. I'm a special agent with the Regulation Enforcement Unit out of Spokane. Today, I'm here to introduce the Rocky Mountain Elk Foundation, who is seeking your approval to offer raffle prizes exceeding $400,000 during their current license year, which ends June 30, 2025. Staff recommend you approve Rocky Mountain Elk Foundation to exceed the annual raffle limit of the $400,000. Today, here to represent, to present today is Alex Byer from the Rocky Mountain Elk Foundation.
Hello, commissioners. I'm Alex Byer, Northwest Regional Lands Manager for the Rocky Mountain Elk Foundation. Army F is a registered 501(c)(3) nonprofit based out of Missoula, Montana, and our mission is to ensure the future of elk, other wildlife, their habitat, and our hunting heritage. I'm coming before you today to request a waiver to exceed the $400,000 limit in raffle prizes paid prior to June 1, 2025, established by WAC 23011067, subsection 3. First, I want to thank you for passing the suite of rules brought forth by us and many other Washington nonprofits last year. I also want to thank your staff for collaborating with our efforts to update language pertaining to nonprofit fundraising in the Revised Code of Washington via Senate Bill 5443. On to the fundraising. 2024 was another incredible year for our efforts in Washington and around the country. Here at home, we again successfully raised 1.6 million net dollars via our Big Game Banquets and other raffle-based events for the second consecutive year. Because of the incredible effort made by our volunteers who do the work and deserve the credit, we enjoyed a near-record allocation to support conservation efforts in the Evergreen State. In total, we supported 44 Habitat and Hunt Inherited projects impacting communities in 17 different counties. Of all the work we accomplished in 2024, two unique Habitat connectivity projects really stood out to me. The first presented itself when the Yakima Titan Irrigation District approached us about a wild, about wildlife crossings that span their massive 114-year-old canal, which had burned in the Brim Rock Retreat fire while it scorched over 30,000 acres of the Oak Creek Wildlife Area. Upon learning about this, we stepped up immediately with the funding for supplies to rebuild these crossings. The Washington State Conservation Corps provided the labor. The other project was when Conservation Northwest approached us about a land acquisition at the zone of Snowpawnee Pass, which was about to fail. The culprit, the Caches Lodge. Without additional funding to demolish the lodge, the future of a 90-foot wildlife underpass connecting the north and south side of I-90 was in jeopardy. As a critical component to the west end of the ongoing connectivity project near Lake Caches, we knew it had to be prioritized during our granting cycle. Not to forget about the Hunting Heritage portion of our mission, we partnered with incredible locally operating organizations like Youth Outdoors Unlimited, Human Nature Hunting, Washington Outdoor Women, Cross the Divide, and Outdoors for Our Heroes, who worked to involve new, diverse, and underserved people in our community. We also supported seven youth street and archery clubs by purchasing key consumable supplies for practice and range improvements. We participated and sponsored, participated in and sponsored Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife's Youth Hunt and Fish Day, along with many other organizations and activities. By providing unique outdoor experiences and educational opportunities, these organizations ensure the perpetuation of our shared hunting and conservation heritage. Nationally, our 40-year anniversary was as busy as ever. A keynote from our efforts from out of state included the foundation stepping up in the final hours with $1.3 million to permanently conserve 2,300 acres located just 30 miles outside of Salt Lake City, Utah. This ground was right in the bill of a major mule deer migration corridor, corridor, which we helped map nearly a decade ago. Without us, the entire land acquisition would have fallen through, and this critical corridor would have been sold to a developer. This project, along with a few others, allowed us to surpass the 9 million acres conserved or enhanced throughout our foundation's history. It's quite, quite the milestone, and we're very excited about it. It is because of the incredibly generous support that we receive from communities all over Washington at our Big Game Banquets and the compressed timeline of our events that I am before you today. Right now, we are in the middle of our, quote, banquet season. Between January 1 and Memorial Day weekend, our volunteers and the two-paid staff in Washington will host 23 different banquets in 23 different communities across the state. In this four-and-a-half-month time period, we will raise 95% approximately of our year-end total and award the vast majority of raffle prizes. That is why we must request a waiver to exceed the newly established $400,000 limit on prizes awarded in a license year, despite this cycle being a shorter cycle. At the close of 2024, we were approximately $70,000 shy of our approved limit of $550,000. Like any organization, we desire growth. Couple that with prices continuing to rise, inflating the value of prizes being awarded, we hope that this commission will allow us to maintain a buffer between our 2024 actual value and the new cap set forward. For these reasons, we respectfully request you approve our request to exceed the $400,000 limit and re-implement a cap of $550,000 for the January 1, 2025 to June 1, 2025 license period. Thank you for your time and consideration. I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Great, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Sounds like you guys have been accomplishing a lot lately. Pretty impressive. Do any of the commissioners have any questions or comments? All right, is there any public comment? Bring it on.
We did not receive any comments online.
All right, we have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Rocky Mountain Elk Foundation's request to offer raffle prizes in excess of $400,000 during their license year ending June 20, 2025.
Second, and Commissioner Lawson, I believe it was the 30th?
Yes.
Oh, what did I say? I'm sorry. I'm getting over it.
That's all right.
All right, so it's been moved and seconded. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passes. Next up, we have the Fiscal Year 25 Budget Update with Kristin Hansen, our Chief Financial Officer.
Good morning, for the record, Kristin Hansen. I am the CFO of the Gambling Commission, and today I just want to give you a budget update. Next slide, please. So I'm sharing with you today just an overview of our revenue over time by category. Just as a reminder, we did implement a fee increase, fee increase, last year. And when looking at these numbers, the, the first quarter that we, that that fee increase was fully implemented because of the staggered license renewal dates was in quarter 2 of 2024, and those revenues were reported in quarter 3 of 2024. So just want to point that out as we go through this. So you see over time that the effects of that fee increase did meet our needs as we move forward. We can see that our fees over time have rebounded. If you look at, for example, 2024 quarter 3 compared to 2023 quarter 3, you can see that there's approximately a $500,000 increase. So, next slide, please. So for the details, I'd like to share, these are the major categories in, in our, in our licensing areas. So this is our commercial manufacturer slide. You can see that even with our fee increase, our, for example, for the punchboard pull tabs, that the revenues that were collected for 2024 quarter 4, which it just closed in December, those revenues were approximately about $150,000 to $200,000 more for a punchboard pull tab than they were last year, even with that fee increase. And you'll see similar numbers in the other categories where there is an increase, but not as significant as was initially expected, and some of that is because we do continue to see less licensees over time. So next slide. That's particularly noticeable in our nonprofits if we look at, for example, our raffle licensee numbers, which is third from the bottom on this list. You can see that in quarter 4, that we reported 108,000 in revenue in that category, and we do know that we have lost, you know, again, licensees in this area. Some of what we're seeing in the manufacturer and distributor licensee group is also consolidation of licensees. So even though the, the business is not, the numbers being reported are not declining because the number of licensees is consolidating, we're seeing less revenues because there's a cap on the revenue per licensee. So, next slide, please. The effect of the fee increase, even with the number of licensees decreasing, has meant that our revenues are currently supporting our expenditures. This slide does not include our IT modernization expenditures because we, as we have shared in previous meetings, we do already have money reserved for that IT modernization project. So these expenditures exclude any of those costs. But you can see that over time, for, for most quarters, that our revenue does exceed our expenditures. This puts us in a good position for the coming year to be able to support expected salary increases because of this statewide budget cycle. Being self-funded, when those expenditures are approved to be increased by the legislature, we have to support those increases. So this, this collection of revenue that is exceeding our expenditures means that we'll be able to support those expected increases without making any changes to our fees at this time. Next slide, please. For our IT modernization, I wanted to take a little bit of time to go over where we are with that. We, you know, we've, we've said multiple times that we've set aside, you know, $9.1 million, but, but I wanted to be able to show you guys, because we're doing so much work on this project, what we actually are doing with that money and, and planning to do with that money. So between actual costs that we have already paid out and contracts that we have signed for work that needs to be done, and then the rest of the work that we've identified that we have not yet signed for, we are full, we have fully obligated the $9.1 million. So we do have a reserve of about $500,000 for any work or changes that we have not yet identified, but our expected bottom line right now is, you know, fully expended. You can see that this estimate shows that there's, you know, about $48,000 that are positive in the budget versus what we're expecting to spend. So just an overview of what we are doing and how we're managing that, that dedicated fund, dedicated fund for the project. Next slide, please. So I realize, looking at this online, if you are, this is probably a little small to see, but this is our projected available fund balance. And last year, after some feedback from our licensees, we began looking at this with a, considering a vacancy rate, because even when we are, you know, recruiting and filling positions, it takes time to do that. So in general, 8% to 10% vacancy rate is pretty typical by the time you recruit and hire. So looking at that, we, and with our projected budget and expend, and revenue for the next year and a half, we are projecting that by the end of June of next year, so June of 2026, that we would have about $2.4 million in available fund balance. And as a reminder of available fund balance, what that is, is money in our bank account, if you will, minus any obligated funds, so our IT modernization, any other projects that we've identified, and then also the reserve that OFM requires us to retain as a working capital balance. So if we subtracted all those out, added our expected revenue, subtracted our expected expenditures, we are projecting that we would have about $2.4 million in the, in our available fund balance at the end of next year, next fiscal year, so June of 26. And just as a reminder, we are just starting our budget cycle work. So we'll be, in the next month, we will internally be working on what our budget request will be, and then presenting that to the commission in a subsequent meeting. Any questions? Comments?
Anybody else have any questions? I think you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have a petition to initiate rulemaking with Trisha, Legislative Rules Manager.
Morning. Morning, she's, good morning, Trisha Gallion, Legislative and Rules Manager. Today, I have one request to initiate rulemaking in Tab 4, is regarding cutting of the deck. The petitioner, Patrick Moore, is requesting to use two cut cards to improve the integrity and prevent cheating in poker games. One cut card could be the joker, a rules card, or an advertising card. The second card could be a traditional plastic cut card currently being used in dealt games. There is a staff recommendation. The enforcement unit does not believe this rule is necessary, as they have not received any complaints of cheating, and based on the lack of complaints, do not see a regulatory need for adding additional requirements to card rooms. Moving forward, petitioner, or commissioners can deny the petitioner's request in writing before initiate the rulemaking process.
Any questions for Trisha? Public comment? Anything? Right, is there a motion?
I move to initiate, I'm sorry, I move to deny her request. I apologize. Because there have been no complaints regarding the issue and no regulatory concerns that have been expressed by staff.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All right. Oh, now we have the 2025 Legislative Update with Trisha.
Sorry, switching gears now to the legislative session. Today is day 39 of this year's 105-day legislative session. We have an update on our agency request legislation. House Bill 1222 just passed out off of the House of Representatives floor last week with a vote of 73 to 21, and will now move to the Senate. Director Griffin and I continue to meet with legislators regarding the general fund deficit and the impacts of a sweep of funds would have on, could have on our IT modernization project. This is an ongoing issue, and we will have more dates for you as the legislative session continues. Finally, we have seven bills that have been introduced this year that are specifically related to gambling. They are before you today to consider to either support or oppose. And just for your reference, our agency remains neutral on legislation unless the commission decides to take a position. Additionally, I do want to mention that bills introduced this year, even if they do not receive a hearing, they can come back during the 2026 legislative session. So they are before you today if, if you would like to take a position or not, so that if they do come up for a hearing, staff knows how the commission would either like to support or oppose, and can let legislators know. So the first bill is House Bill 1362. This bill would create a gambling diversion court pilot program. It would establish eligibility standards and requirements for the treatment program and would allow the court to just discharge a conviction for an individual upon completion of the diversion treatment program. Can we just go through them all first?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. I didn't know if you wanted to take it. Okay. House Bill 1364 would increase the gross revenue threshold for unlicensed bingo, raffle, raffles, and amusement games conducted by charitable and nonprofit organizations from $5,000 to $15,000. Senate Bill 5443 would increase the maximum price which raffle tickets can be sold from $100 to $250. It would increase the gross revenue threshold for unlicensed bingo, raffles, and amusement games conducted by charitable and nonprofit organizations from $5,000 to $20,000, and increase the gross revenue from bingo and amusement games to $10,000. Additionally, it would allow for three enhanced raffles per calendar year for Easter, for both Eastern and Western Washington for bona fide charitable organizations, resulting in six total enhanced raffles each year. Finally, it would allow bona fide charitable, charitable and nonprofit organizations to conduct a promotional contest of chance and allow bona fide charitable and nonprofit organizations to solicit a donation in a promotional contest of chance. Senate Bill 5512 would allow for centralized surveillance system monitoring in house-banked card rooms. This is designed to ensure gambling is conducted in an honest, competitive, and safe environment. The proposal of this surveillance system is to, in a way, is to, is to, in a way that is not publicly accessible, document events that ensure the licensed gambling activities are conducted honestly and free criminal elements and activities, protect the public and employees, and allow card rooms to implement cost-saving measures by reducing the amount of surveillance staff that are required to have, they are required to have on site. Senate Bill 5565 would allow senior living centers, senior housing, and senior living communities to conduct a bingo game once a week. Gross revenues from bingo would not exceed $10,000 during the calendar year. Senate Bill 5285 would allow cities and counties to authorize a 0.1% sales tax to fund additional law enforcement officers. It would additionally require the Criminal Justice Training Commission to provide at least 27 basic law enforcement officers' training classes each year. And finally, Senate Bill 5621 would prohibit electronic raffles conducted at sporting events where the prize, total prize amount is 50% of the gross gambling receipts collected.
Okay, is that all of them?
That is all of them.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right, so do any of the commissioners have any, want to support or specifically oppose any of these, or any neutral as the commission staff is doing what? Any thoughts on that?
Chair Levy, point of information, are we able to just choose one of these, or do we have to go the whole slate together?
You can choose one, and then we'll, we would write a letter of support or of opposition to whomever the person is that sponsored the bill.
Thank you.
Personally, I think that we would remain neutral for now. If it comes, if any of them come back next year, I would like them brought back in front of us again next year, though, rather than just using a decision today for future, just in case things could change over the following year. But if, I don't know if anyone else believes things differently. All ears.
I, I agree with that perspective, that as of today, I, I think that we should remain neutral, but if anything changes, bring them back to us, or they seem to, you know, go forward.
Commissioner Charles, you have any thoughts on any of that, or are you?
No, I think that, that seems logical to me as well, to just wait, so thank you.
All right, is there any public comment on any of? All right. Is there any public comment on any of this that might change our minds at all? I don't see any. All right. All right. So next up, it's Gary Drumheller, the Deputy Director with the update on the IT modernization.
Good morning, Commissioners, officials. Gary Drumheller, Deputy Director. I have an update on two projects for you today. One is our Polaris project, which is our IT modernization. And the other is our Lexipol project for our agency policies. First thing I want to start with is just some of the challenges of any IT modernization that you go, that you face. Obviously, our legacy system is 30 years old. And so in a nutshell, we duct tape it to keep it running every day. Our IT department does a great job with, with doing that. And you saw the budget limitations that we're facing. And so obviously, everybody would like a Cadillac model, but we know that we're going to have to settle for the Toyota or Subaru that'll get us 100,000 miles and keep us going, right, for a long time. And we hope that maybe along the way, we can, we can update and upgrade and, you know, maybe get air conditioning and, and, you know, automatic windows or something like that, you know, just to keep us going. So just try to keep it.
One more.
Yeah, actually, one more. All right.
Really bring us into the night.
Yes, yes. 18-inch wheels?
Yeah.
All right. So, so we, you know, those are challenges that we face, but we try to do the best we can with our implementer to get those things going and keep them running. Obviously, change is always difficult. And our staff is doing a great job, but we have to keep going because it, it's going to be difficult as we, we get rid of one system and start a new system, and that change is never easy. So we're in the process of hiring a, a change management consultant to help us through that process. We also have investigation issues regarding just keeping us moving forward with, you know, every project like this has, has bumps in the road. And we just have to keep going and get through those. And then migration, when it comes to data security, migration's always huge. And, and so we have a great IT staff and I know they'll get us through that without any issues or problems. But one of the things we have is a quality assurance person, and they, they keep us kind of grounded a little bit. And they're outside looking in at our project and they give us a rating, a grade. One to three is, is you're doing great, really no issues. Four to six is, hey, there's some minor things you have to fix and, and maybe some minor concerns that you have to continue to monitor and watch. And then anything over six are serious concerns that need to be addressed immediately. As you can see, we're at a 3.5, so we're doing really well. We have a few, a few things we have to look at, but overall, a 3.5, this phase of the game is a great grade, a great number to have. And we're in constant contact with our quality assurance contractors who, who provide us guidance to help us through some of the bumps in the road. So we're doing a great job. Our implementer's doing great. Our staff is doing absolutely fantastic because it's, it's a lot of work, a lot of work. They meet every day and, and plus they have their everyday duties as well. And so kudos goes to them for just keeping, keeping things going and keeping this project moving forward. Where we are today is our implementer has now draft deliverables, user stories that we have put together, and they're starting that development process. And that's great because a lot of us are visual people. So as they develop this, we'll really be able to see what it looks like. Right now, it's all written down. And, and once they start to develop this, we get to see it and put it in action and play with it and see where some of the things we need to fix, some of the things that might not be working. And that, that'll be a, a phase that really tells us where we're headed and what we have. So that, that's a quick update on our Polaris. Any questions regarding our project?
The quality assurance folks are, are those from the state?
No, they're contractors. Yes. Yep. Yep. So they're kind of a third party that oversees the project and, and they're kind of outside looking in and they interview different staff. They talk to our implementer and try to get a feel, a lay of the land as to where we are and what we're doing and how we're doing it. The year ahead, this is just kind of a breakdown of, of where we're at, where we're headed. And, and you can see our go-live date is end of December. And again, I said, we have bumps in the road, so we're probably pushing that out to January, which makes sense, which gives us that added additional time to fix some of those things and, and work through the process with our implementer. So that's all I have for that project. Any questions? All right.
Thank you.
The next one I have is our Lexipol project, which is our agency policies. And we have switched over to Lexipol. We used to do our own policies and try to update our own policies. And what Lexipol does is they are tied with WASPIC, which is the Washington Association of Sheriff's and Police Chiefs. And we're an accredited agency. And so they do all the updating with case law and any criminal procedure changes or legislative changes. Lexipol monitors all of that and then they'll, they'll shoot out a policy change that will reflect any of those changes. And, and so we don't have to monitor that anymore. They will do it for us. And, but in the meantime, we have had to look at all of our policies because they pretty much look at all the law enforcement policies. And obviously, the state has many more policies that we have to convert over. So that transition happened February 1st. So we finally completed it and put it in motion and it is up and running. And basically, all these policies are best practices. And, and that's, that's part of the accreditation process. That's part of what Lexipol follows. And so we've converted or created about 174 new policies. And staff is in the process of reading those policies right now. And yeah, obviously, there are some things that we could have to continue to do, to monitor and, and to make sure our policies are, are ready to go. Like links to a policy, they might click on it and it doesn't go anywhere. So we might have to fix that. But we're, we're, that's the phase we're at now is just fixing some of those little things.
Make sure Charles has raised his hand.
Yes, sir.
I, I, just out of interest, I'm like, where do those best practices, like, who determines those best practices?
Those will come from the accreditation, the WASPIC accreditation team. So as they, they put together the standards, the, the policies we create meet those standards. And then those standards meet our practice. And, and so that's the concept is policy meets practice or practice meets policy. And we are coming up to a time where we will be accredited next year. We go through that process. So we'll be doing an internal mock assessment here this spring to make sure from our transition from our old policies to our new policies, to make sure those new policies meet the standard and meet the practice that, that we do every day.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. That's all for Lexipol. Any questions on that? As you know, Steve, people, you know, you get one, one policy, you change it. You get another one, you change it. That's kind of what people feel like, which is all good. Any questions on that? No? Great. Thank you.
All right. So that brings us to the end of our meeting. Do we have any published comments on anything that happened today? Not seeing any, then we will take a short five-minute break and then we will go into executive session for 30 minutes to discuss current potential agency litigation with legal counsel, including tribal negotiations. We will come back to adjourn the meeting.
Room is live. Thank you.
The next Gambling Commission meeting will be held on March 13th and 14th, 2025 at the Washington State Liquor and Cannabis Board. That takes care of our agenda for today. It is now 10:30 a.m. We are adjourned.
We are just officially ending the executive session at this time.
This concludes our executive session at 10:30 a.m. We're now adjourned at 10:30 a.m., 10:31 a.m.
Thank you.